Praise the Lord, everybody. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord, everybody. Amen. Hallelujah. I don't know about you, but I'm ready to get my praise on. Hallelujah. God is good. He has been so good to us. Hallelujah. Let's, let's just do this. Hallelujah. Amen. Amen. Welcome to Praise by Nature Ministries. Hallelujah. I'm Pastor Anderson. Amen. Welcome. Hallelujah. We having a good time in the Lord right now. Hallelujah. Things want, don't wanna work, but that's alright. Hallelujah. As long as we live now. Hallelujah. That's all that matters. Yeah. Amen. So again, welcome to Praise by Nature Ministries. Amen. I am Pastor Anderson and I'm so glad that you are tuning in. Amen. On this lovely Wednesday. Amen. I hope that everything is going well right now. Hallelujah. I hope that you're doing well in the things of God. Hallelujah. So, like I said, I'm just super excited for what the Lord has in store for us today, tonight. Amen. So if you have not gotten ready, get ready. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord to Sister Leah. Amen. Sister Tasha in the building. Hallelujah. Go ahead. This is time to put them likes and them hearts up. Hallelujah. Let's put them hearts and likes up. Amen. So without further ado, amen, we're gonna go ahead and get into this word. Like I said, I'm super elated, super excited for what God is doing. Amen. Right now in this place. Hallelujah. If you would like to comment, please go ahead and comment. Amen. We're going to do our best. Amen. My brother Chris is on the scene. Ah, yeah. Amen. Amen. Good to see him on, on, on the ones and twos. Hallelujah. But again, if you comment, amen, I'm gonna see it on the screen and give you a little shout out as we get started today. Hallelujah. I'm telling you, this is the day that the Lord has made. I will rejoice. Uh oh, my pops is on the scene. Ah. Yeah. We gonna give you a praise of. Come on. Come on. Amen. He dancing in the clouds, dancing in the clouds. Alright. Amen. So let's go ahead and get into Bible study this evening. Alright, let's go ahead. Let me start playing around here. Amen. I'm feeling good. Hallelujah. Amen. So let's go ahead and get, get into this Bible study. Hallelujah. Turn this music off, cuz I'm gonna start dancing again. Amen. Let's go. Let's go ahead and open up with a word of prayer. Father, we thank you tonight for your glory, your grace and power. God, we just ask God that you will continue to bless us with your favor and your anointing tonight as we go through this study today. God, lead and guide us into all truth tonight, Father God. Let your will be done tonight. God, use me tonight, Father God, to speak your word to your people. In the name of Jesus, we all say and pray, amen. Amen. I'm gonna try to behave tonight. I'm gonna try to behave tonight. We'll see what happens. Hallelujah. But I wanna get into this word tonight. So brothers and sisters, somehow some jump roles coming next Bible study here. Amen. I, I can just feel it already. But we're gonna attempt to get through verses 10 through 16 this evening. Amen. So hopefully we'll be able to get through that. We're gonna go ahead and read verses 10 through 16. And then we're gonna go ahead and talk about it. Do a little slight, slight recap. Excuse me, through verse 10 and 11. Amen. Just to kinda highlight that. Then we'll kinda go through the rest of the chapter. As you can tell, I'm in part four. Amen. I'm just taking my time. Amen. Hey, you know, you know, I gotta be smiling all day, every day. Amen. God is good. I see they over here, everybody on Facebook and stuff, they, they talking. Amen. I gotta keep all the smiles going today. Hallelujah. Gotta make sure they know I'm happy today. You know why I'm happy? I'm happy to be in the things of God today. Let me quit here. But I, I am happy to be alive. I'm happy to be saved. Amen. I am happy. Hallelujah. Amen. To be giving him the glory, honor and praise. I, I tell you that much right now. I'm just even happy, blessed and elated. Hallelujah. All, all at the same time. Amen. You know, my cousin making fun of me, but that's okay. We gonna be happy. We'll give you a praise and you need to get happy. Shout right now. Alright. Amen. Alright. Amen. So let's go ahead and get into this Bible study here. So let's go through the main reading here. And again, we're gonna read 10 through 16. The Bible reads in Philippians, chapter two, verses 10 through 16. It reads as the following. It says, "So that at the name of Jesus, every knee will bow of those who are in heaven and on earth and under the earth. And that every tongue will confess that Jesus Christ is Lord to the glory of God, the Father. So then, my beloved, just as you have always obeyed, not as in my presence only, but now much more in my absence, work out your salvation with fear and trembling. For it is God who is at work in you, both to will and to work for his good pleasure." 14 says, "Do all things without grumbling and disputing, so that you will prove yourself to be blameless and innocent, children of God, above reproach, in the midst of a crooked and perverse generation, among whom you appear as light in the world, holding fast the word of life, so that in the day of Christ I will have reason to glory, because I did not run in vain nor toil in vain." Amen. So as we begin to break this down, there are some interesting things here that we are going to discuss here. And as we look at verse 10 through 11, 10, 10 through 11 is some, some of our, I know some of my favorite scriptures. Amen. But 10 through 11 is very, very critical. Cuz 10 through 11 tells us that at the name of Jesus, right? Paul is making this, this statement to this church of Philippi who is, who has had some issues, has some, you know, some folk up in, in Philippi. They trying to get, they smelling themselves, getting beside themselves. There's, there's two groups really. One group is doing the will of God and the other group is deciding to do their own thing and, and their mind thinking that they're gonna cause harm to Paul's ministry, which we see in chapter one here. And, and, and you, you got some, you got some sisters in chapter four who can't seem to get on the same page. And Paul is saying, you know, hey, you know, let's let, let, let them sisters get in harmony. It's just, just a lot of people just, you know, kinda clashing right here. And, and here we are seeing some, some very interesting words and, and statements here because Paul is saying, listen, I, I need you to focus here at the bigger picture here. And so we know that at the name of Jesus, I'm not gonna read it again, but at the name of Jesus, right? The Bible declares, right, that the name of Jesus, you know, those in earth, on earth, under the earth, right? They're gonna confess and what they're gonna do, they're gonna confess that Jesus is Lord. And so the first thing, now that we begin to see in this text here, is we begin to see that every knee is going to bow. Now, as I begin to continue to read and read and marinate and read and revisit the text, there was something that was interesting that kinda popped out to me that I did not notice the first few times. When I read this again and we'll see as the text flows, we're going to begin to see that this section, this every knee that will bow, right? Is going to, is, is a future event. This is not a event now that is going to happen. This is a future event, right? This is a, you know, we can call it an end time, that we can call it after the rapture, if you, if you please, but this is going to be a end time event that everybody is going to bow down to Jesus and declare him as Lord. When this happens, it does not matter at this point whether you're saved, whether you're not saved, whether you with God, whether you're not with God, because this is going to be, this is, and I'm putting it in my words, this is going to be, you thought I wasn't God, you, you gonna find out that I'm God and, and it's gonna be too late if your name is not written in the book of life. But this is a end time. This is a futuristic, this is a future event that is coming. It's, it's not here yet, but it's on its way, right? Yeah, it, it, it's on its way. And so when we look at the knee bowing, right? This is understood again as a person, a human being understood, right, to, 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 to a, a, a bowing knee or, you know, I got the technical term there, but you know, I'm on bended knees. I, I, I'm going to bow down. In other words, I'm going to honor and worship. This bended knee also has, right? The, 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 the tense and the tone of worship. What the Lord is going to tell us, what the Lord is telling us via Paul, is that there is going to come a time where everybody is going to bow down and worship the Lord. At this time, you're not going to have a choice. While we're still alive, we are making decisions whether or not we are going to bow down and worship him. But there's gonna come a time where everybody is going to bow down and worship him. So, and, and that's why he says that it's, it's important here because there are these three locations. This is how we get this future event. Because he says folk in heaven, folk that are still on earth, folk that are under the earth, right? So he's saying everybody is going to eventually have to bow down and pay homage to the Lord and worship him as king and ruler. Hmm. Scripture tells us in Romans 11, 14, 11, it says, "For it is written, as I live, says the Lord, that every knee shall bow to me and every tongue shall give praise to God." It is, it is here that we see that this confession of Jesus Christ is going to be key here. Because you know, if I pause here and I don't, we're in a time where people have a problem confessing or professing that Jesus is Lord here. And so here, the tone again is suggesting that there's going to come a time when everybody is going to have to, without, without choice, is going to confess that Jesus is Lord. This confession or to profess really has the sense of acknowledgement. This has the tone of, I am going to openly honor, I am going to openly acknowledge you as Lord. That's right. Even those demons, amen, they gonna have to acknowledge that he is Lord at, at, at a given time. All those atheists, all of those people worshiping the stars, the sun, the moon, the trees, all of these, all of these folk that say that there is no God, there's gonna come a time when they are going to have to acknowledge that Jesus existed and that he not only existed, he is, and he is Lord. Uh huh. They're, they're going to have to openly profess and acknowledge him, which, which, which at this time, when they do acknowledge him, it is not a guarantee that they're getting into the, they're getting into glory. Because, hmm, hallelujah. You know, if, if God has to force you at this time, that means you weren't paying attention when you had time. You know, the Bible tells us that we ought to seek the Lord while he may be found. It behooves you now, hallelujah, that while you still got breath in your body, while you still have time, ah, God help me, that you profess and acknowledge Jesus as Lord and acknowledge him as an authority over your life. Don't you be like these folk, don't you be like these trees in, in California. People, the, the, the rain just raining so much, they just blowing people away. Don't you look like you saved, but soon as the storm come, you blow down, you ain't saved. You don't wanna look like you saved. You wanna know that you're saved. You wanna live like you saved. Hallelujah. You just want, you don't wanna look on the outside that you saved. Cuz when the storm come, you gonna be like these trees right down on this boulevard falling down. Hallelujah. But you wanna be saved. You wanna live saved. You wanna profess and acknowledge God as God. Hallelujah. Jesus as Lord. You just don't wanna look saved. I don't know about you, but I'm, they gotta, you gotta get tired of just folk, just pretending to be saved. Hallelujah. He's saying, ah, hmm, ah, God. Man, I feel like running here. He, he's showing us here that there's gonna come a time that the folk that look saved, that weren't saved, but look like they were saved according to world church standards. There's gonna come a time where you really gonna have to profess him to be Lord. Hallelujah. Now is the time. Now is the time while he is still alive to repent, get right and get under God and acknowledge him as Lord. Stop playing around. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Time to stop playing around. Glory to your name. Hallelujah. Revelations, Revelations tells us that in 5, 12 through 14, it says, "Saying with the loudest voice, worthy is the lamb that was slain to receive power and riches and wisdom and might and honor and glory and blessings." And 13 says, "And every created thing which is in heaven, on the earth, under the earth." Man, it says, "In the sea." "All things in them I heard them, I heard saying, to him who sits on the throne and to the lamb be blessing and honor and glory, dominion forever and ever." 14 says, "And the four living creatures kept saying, amen, and the elders fell down and what worshiped him." Revelations 4 and 10 through 11 says, "The twenty-four elders will fall down before him who sits on the throne and will worship him who lives forever and ever and will cast their crowns before the throne," saying, uh huh, "worthy are you, O Lord, and are God, to receive glory, honor and power, for you created all things and because of you will they exist and were created." Listen, if you don't know anything, how to worship or what to say in worship, why don't you just read these scriptures and recite it? Because that's gonna capture everything that, 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 that God will need. Hallelujah. My God, the, the time is now. The time is now. You see, amen, in chapter five, you saw everybody, even in the sea. Every created thing is going to have to worship and, and, and profess Jesus as Lord. Hallelujah. And so, so this is a acknowledgement, right? This is openly professing. You are acknowledging that he is Lord. Now, there's a difference now. Because when you get to Romans 10 and nine, right? Where it says, "Confess with your mouth that Jesus is Lord and believe in your heart that God raised him from the dead. You will be saved." When, when you, when you get here now, and it says, "For with your heart a person believes, resulting in righteousness, and with the mouth he confesses, resulting in salvation." There's, there's a difference here. There's a difference here. Because Paul is talking about a, in, in, in his text, he's talking about to the Philippians, a open acknowledgement. But in Romans, when you look up the word in, in Greek, it, it comes back two ways now, right? And so, so when we see this now in Romans, we see the definition meaning to profess, to make an open and free declaration. And that's what the Lord is trying to get us to do. We see Paul talking to the church of Rome here, but he, but, 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 but Paul is really talking to all of us here. Are you going to make an open and free declaration? Listen, look at the tone of the text again. The tone says that this is going to result in salvation. Paul says, you're going to say that he is Lord. It doesn't have salvation here. But Romans says that this is going to result, the end result is gonna be that you are going to be saved. Hallelujah. They both have the same root word. They're both connected together. But Paul is trying to tell you that now is the time to openly confess that Jesus is Lord. Now is the time, in the midst of hatred, in the midst of people looking strange, in the midst of your enemies, in the midst of your uncles, cousins and aunties of them that don't believe that Jesus is Lord. You need to stand ten toes down and openly confess that he is Lord. He says in this book of Romans that I'm not ashamed of the gospel of Jesus Christ. He says that if you draw nigh to him, he'll draw nigh to you. Now is the time to openly confess that he is Lord. I don't know about you, but I wanna be saved. I'm gonna openly confess that he is Lord. I, I don't wanna wait till the end times because I'm not gonna have my name in the book of life then. I need to do this now while there's still breath in my body. While there's still breath in my body. Hallelujah. I'm gonna give it all unto God. Hallelujah. And I'm going to openly confess that Jesus is Lord. You don't need to wait till you get on Facebook to do this. You don't need to post a post. You need to walk to walk and declare without a shadow of a doubt that he is Lord. Hallelujah. Hallelu- ah, God. Hallelujah to your name. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So there's a difference here. Oh, God. There's a difference here. He's saying that this is the future event. But we see something that we can do now. Last week, we talked about confession and we talked about how when we don't confess our faults unto God, we're denying him a part of worship. We're denying him worship that is due him. When we don't confess our faults unto God, when we, I mean, you know, we, we confess our faults unto one another and right, we're, we're, we're strengthening ourselves. That's fine. We should be doing that. You know, if we have a, we need to set that right. But you still need to talk to God because not only did you offend your brother and sister, but you disrespected God. And so when we don't confess to God and we don't openly tell God what our issues are, what our deep dark secrets are, we show him by our actions that we don't trust him. And because, and if we don't trust him, then how can we live for him if we don't even trust him? To, to believe that he can forgive sins. He died to forgive sins. And if we don't even open our mouth and trust him, hallelujah to your name, Jesus. How in the world can we live a life according to the scriptures if we don't even trust him enough to, to ask him for forgiveness of our sins? Hallelujah. I hear them songs. I will trust in the Lord. David had to talk about this in Psalms. Oh, God, help me here. Help me here. Where's this at? Hallelujah. Hallelujah. I don't even have this on the screen here. David had to talk about this in Psalms. Hallelujah. In Psalms 30, 30, 32. He had to talk about this. In Psalms 32 and 3, I don't have it written, but he said, in the New Living Translation, just to give it a little bit more pop here, he said, "When I refused to confess my sins, my body was wasted away and I groaned all day long, day and night. Your hand discipline was heavy on me. My strength evaporated like a water in the summer heat." Verse five, he says, "Finally, I confess all of my sins to you and stop trying to hide my guilt. I said to myself, I will confess my rebellion to the Lord and you forgave me all of my guilt." My God, David said, "I had issues." Hallelujah. When I wouldn't openly confess my faults unto him. Hallelujah. And if I'm gonna, and if I'm gonna go to the grave not confessing my faults, man, I'm really playing Russian roulette. David said, "The strength was, the, the Lord's discipline was on me. The strength was on me. It felt like the sun was on me and I was evaporating. The, the energy was evaporating until I finally gave in and gave God all of my issues." That's what I'm trying to tell you before I move on. Now is the time to give him all your issues. Don't be, hmm, don't be like these people who start having issues because they wouldn't talk to him. Hallelujah. Don't, don't, hmm. Don't, don't be like them. Don't be like them. David said, "Finally, when I let go and let God, finally, when I confess unto the Lord, that's when I was set free. That's when, hallelujah, I was liberated. Hallelujah to your name, Jesus." So there's a future event and there's a current event. The future event is everybody gonna confess. The current event is you, you have to confess on your own accord, have to be willing. You're saying, "God, I really want, I really want you. And you, you've got to do this. And you've got to take on the name of Jesus and go through what you gonna go through. But you, you, you're doing this because you want to be saved." You see, look at what verse 12 says. It gonna make sense. This is why Paul said, "So then, my beloved, just as you have always obeyed, now as in my, not, not as in my presence only, but now much more in my absence, work out your own salvation, your salvation with fear and trembling." Notice. Notice now. Starting to, it's starting to come together. Cuz Paul is saying, he's, he's like, look. Look. First point, he says, "Just as you have always obeyed me." Paul, Paul is, Paul is letting us know. Man, as you have always done. Look what he says in Romans, I mean, Philippians 1 and 5 and 6. He says, "And view of your participation in the gospel from the first day until now." He says this. "For I am confident of this very thing, that he who begun a good work in you will perfect it until the day of Christ Jesus." So he's saying, "Listen, my beloved, just as if you always obeyed." And he's saying, "Not only when I was there, but when..." And he's saying, not only when I was there, but when I was away, right? So he's setting them up, he's setting them up, he's telling them, he's letting them know. I agree that you're still living right, right? I agree, I agree, I see this, I see this, I'm acknowledging this. I notice that some of y'all are still living right, but then what he's, he's saying after this. He's saying, but I need you to work it out though. I need you to work it out. What does, what does he say here? The word work now is a command. He's giving them a command to work out their salvation. What does work mean? Work means to accomplish, to put something into effect entirely or thoroughly. It means to make an effort to obtain salvation. So Paul is saying, I know that you've done this before, when I was there and when I was not there. But I need you now to continue to make an effort to work out your salvation. Amen, y'all, y'all lost the sound? The sound is off, is it, is it off? Amen, I still hear the sound, do you guys still hear the sound? Let me know if you guys still hear, cause I can hear it on my phone. Can you guys text and let me know if you guys can still hear me? Amen. I hear it on my, I hear it on my phone. Hallelujah, I'm gonna go double check, I'm gonna double check, but y'all text me and let me know if y'all can still hear me. Hallelujah. Yeah, I still, I still got sound. Okay, thank you, bro, thank you. Amen, thank, thank you, bro. Alright, cool. Deacon, you may have to do a little thing within you. Amen, we still got sound. So, so Paul says. Paul says, right, to work, right, eh, to work. It means to make an effort to obtain salvation. So what does that, what does that mean? He's, now, if he was saying, you know, uh, 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 you know, earlier, what he was saying earlier now is starting to make sense. About working out salvation. Because now what he's saying is that every knee is gonna bow, every tongue is gonna confess. He's now telling us, listen, I need you to continue to make every effort to obtain salvation. Or to keep working on your salvation. Because again, there's some folk out there in Philippi that ain't preaching the truth, that, that don't want to live the truth. So you need to make every effort to work out your own salvation. Hallelujah, thank you, amen, hallelujah. I need you to make every effort now to continue to work out your salvation. So he's letting us know. Salvation still needs to be obtained, you still need to work out. Continue to progress in your walk with God. Continue to move forward in your walk with God. Continue to do what God is calling you to do. Don't slack off, don't look back. Amen, continue to move forward, continue to strive, continue to live right, continue to live holy, hallelujah. Because when that day comes, you still want your name to be written in a book of life. I don't know about you, but I still want my name to be written in the book of life. Hallelujah to your name, Jesus. When he calls my name, I still want him to tell, I'd say my name is in the book of life and say, go into paradise or whatever he gonna say. I just want to hear my name and jump in the glory, I'm trying, I'm trying to tell you the truth here. Hallelujah. And so we have to work out, we have to make every effort. We have to want to grow, mm, we have to want to live right. We have to want to be saved. We have to want to push things away. We have to want to push a negativity away. We have to want to groom ourselves. We have to want to self-evaluate ourselves. We have to go through the rough side of the mountain, I know, hallelujah. But hallelujah, oh, God, hallelujah. Nothing compares to the glory that is going to be revealed. So he says, I need you to work out, make every effort to obtain salvation. You gotta ask yourself the question, are you making an effort? Not according to your standards, but according to God's standards. Are you making an effort to work out your salvation? Hallelujah. Salvation simply is, right? The state of being delivered or preserved from harm. Especially at what the state entails, a safe haven in heaven, right? Again. Salvation, we understand that we are saved now from the sting of death. We are saved now, amen, from being under the domain of the enemy, hallelujah. We know the ultimate salvation is that when we will be caught up with him and be with him in paradise, hallelujah. That we won't hurt no more, mm, that we won't have any pain no more, hallelujah. As Corinthians says, death, where is your sting? Hallelujah. Hallelujah to your name, Jesus. Eh eh, and so he says, you need to do whatever you doing to continue to work out your deliverance and salvation. Hallelujah. It, it's, it's more than this, it's, 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 it's more than this. It's not just, oh, the same old, same old. Nah, bruh, nah, sis, we've got to work out our own salvation. The Bible says in Hebrews five and nine, it says, and having been made perfect, he became to all those who obeyed him. The source of eternal salvation. Bible says that he what became all to those, to all to those who obeyed him. He became the source of salvation. He is saying that if you make your calling and declaration now and you believe in Jesus Christ. Jesus is the source of salvation. That's why everybody is going to have to bow down to the eternal everlasting source. You might as well get it over with now and say, God, I'm gonna bow down to you now while I still got breath in my body. I'm, I'm gonna bow down to you now and believe in you. I'm gonna trust in you. I believe that you are the source of my strength. You are the source, you are the source of eternal salvation, hallelujah. I'm gonna believe, I'm gonna trust in you no matter what comes my way. Hallelujah to your name, Jesus, mm. Oh, God, hallelujah, he is my joy, he is my peace, he is my strength. Oh! Hallelujah. So he says, then I need you to, 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 what'd he say? He says. He says, I need you to do this, work out your salvation with fear and trembling. Fear really means to have a reverence. I need you to have a reverence. This reverence needs to be kind of like this, this, I mean, it's, it's really hard to explain here. Because he says, I need you to have a profound respect. I need you to have a, a reverence, a, a, a worship, right? And this trembling really simply, we can simply state, cause it's trembling means the act shaking, vibrating, right? Like a scared or, or, or in awe. I need you to have a worship in awe, a reverence for him. I need you to have a reverence of awe of God. How folk are in awe of people, you need to be in awe of God. Yeah, 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 yeah. You hear stories, people, people, they, uh, you hear basketball players. Uh, you, you, you can Google it, Al- Allen Iverson, he said, when he first saw Michael Jordan. He just saw aura around him, like he could walk on water, right? He, they were in reverence of the awe of Michael Jordan, right? When they see these celebrities, because they, they, they become their God. When they see them, they have a reverence of worship and, and awe. He's saying, man, you need to have a reverence and a worship in awe of me. Why are you gonna awe another human and not be in reverence of me, the creator of all things? Why? 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 So there needs to be an awe, a reverence of an awe. It's just like folk, they, you know, folk would go to that Mike, the Michael Jackson concerts and they just be, soon as they see him, they just pass out. That's a reverence of awe. They, they, they trembled so much, they shaking so much, they fall out. Cause they worship in him. They wor- they worship in him. But we need to have that type of worship towards God, a worship in awe. Ah, God, hallelujah. That means you have high honor and respect for him. You have high honor and respect. You just not gonna let anything just slide. You know how folk get when they talk about, I mean, okay, I, I li- I listen to sports. You know how people talk when they talk about the greatest of all times? Is it LeBron, is it, is it Michael? And you, folk get in arguments. You see what I'm saying? Because of that revere, that worship, that respect, that awe. Paul is saying. Work out your salvation with worship in awe. The same kind of awe that you go, that you putting on these idols, these, these world folk. Man, I need to be with God. I need to be with God. Stop putting that reference in, 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 in folk. They, 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 they can't save you. For real, they can't save you. Mm. I'm just saying. I'm just saying. Listen, look at what. Corinthians says. I like how the New Living puts this, it says, now he cares for you more, more than ever. When he remembers the way all of you obeyed him and welcomed him with such fear and deep respect. Worship in awe. Worship in awe. They were in awe of God. Worship in awe. When God came, when you, you hear the Lord coming in on the scene in the Old Testament, they, they shaking. In awe. Fear, reverence, fear and deep, 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 deep respect. Do you have deep respect for God right now? I'm not talking about what folk doing on the street, I'm talking about you. Do you have deep respect for God right now? Do you have respect? Do you have a deep fear and a reverence? I was telling, I was telling, I was telling Deacon, I said, I don't care what folk doing. I don't care what, what, what organizations, organizations are doing, I'm trying to make sure I'm saved. I ain't got time to play games. I don't want it, I don't want to play games. I ain't got time to play games. I, I gotta be about my father's business. I don't have time to waste. I told him, I said, I'm waking up, I'm like, Lord, forgive me. New mercy is laid for me every day. Man, do you have a deep reverence and respect for him? See, I, I want you to, I, why I keep saying that is because sometimes we have a deep reverence and respect when we in a church building. Oh, but when we step outside the four walls, as if God is only holy in the church. We ain't got no respect at all. What's up with that? Like he only occupies a building? I'm just saying, just saying. Come on, somebody, I'm just saying. We have to have a deep reverence and respect for God. So what is he after? He's after our worship. That's why the Bible says, they that worship me what, must worship me what? In spirit and in truth. Mm hmm. That's what it said. So then look at thirteen. Thirteen says, for it is God who is at work in you, both to will and to work for his good pleasure. Oh, Lord, help us out. It's God that is at work in you. Here's why we need to work out our salvations. What does work mean? At work simply means it is, it means to implement, to cause. Excuse me, to cause, to function, to carry into effect. Paul states that God is at work, he has been implemented in us. Romans twelve and thirteen says, for through the grace given to me, I say to everyone among you. Not to think more highly of himself than he ought to think, but to think so as to have sound judgment. As God has allotted to each measure of faith. Corinthians, first Corinthians twelve and six says, there are varieties of effects, but the same God who works all things in all persons. It's God who is working within us. It is God who is matriculating in us, it is God who is living in us, it is God who is at work in us. What are you going to do? He's saying, God is at work in us, right? Then he says, the be portion, both to will and to work for his good pleasure. That will means to desire, to desire, to feel or to have desire for, want strongly. Work means to what? To function, to do what something is used for, performed as, expected when operating. And pleasure means goodwill, a delightful fix, um, intention of benevolent, um, benevolent favor. Matthew tells us in eleven twenty-six. Yes, Father, it pleased you to do this way. It pleased you to do his will. Thessalonians tells us. So we keep on praying for you, asking our God to enable you to live a life worthy of his call. May he give you the power to accomplish all the good things your faith prompts you to do. You see, you see? So what I want to do, I, I'm gonna, I want to reread Philippians twelve and thirteen. But I'm gonna read it in a different, uh, translation. I like how this says, maybe it'll bring, bring to highlight, amen, again, what we have been talking about, hallelujah. Amen, you guys can, you know, I'm gonna get up, I'm gonna get down, I get happy, I'm about to run around. Amen. So he says. And I like this translation, it's called Bible for Everyone, but it says, so, my dear people. You always did what I said, so please now carry on in the same way. Not just as I, not just as though I was there with you, but much more because I'm not. Your task now is to work at bringing about your own salvation. And naturally, you're, you'll be taking this with utter seriousness. Listen to the last part, they say, your task is now to work at bringing about your own salvation. Why is this important? There are folk in that community that are on both sides. And Paul is saying, it's still up to you. You've been born again, you've got the Holy Ghost. It's up to you now to take your own salvation and take it with, and, and be serious about it. It's on you. You can't blame nobody but yourself. If you're not gonna take your salvation. The salvation that we saw, that, you know, we sing the song, that's not how the story is, he got up, right? That's the, that's the same song we cry, fall on the floor, spit on people about. And you don't take it seriously for what he did, that's gonna be on you. He's saying, your task now. Is to work on your own salvation. What did the Bible say in Acts? Save yourself, save yourself, save yourself. Save yourself. From this wicked perverse generation, we, that's, that's coming up in this text. He's, uh, we've already read it in our opening statement about how the generation is perverse and wicked. So he's saying, I need you to save yourself, save yourself. You need to work out your own salvation. Thirteen says. After all, God himself is the one who's at work among you. Who provides both the will and the energy to enable you to do what pleases him. It is God at work, it is, it is God who is giving you the will and the energy to do what pleases him. who is giving you the will and the energy to do what pleases him. My God, my God. We don't even have the energy to do what we want, we don't even have the energy to please him. It's him at work in us. It is him who has given us the energy and the will, the power, to do what pleases him by us having that Holy Ghost on the inside. It is enabling us, hallelujah, and energizing us to do what pleases him. Then the Bible saying, that, that, that the Holy Ghost is gonna what? Lead and guide us in all truth. Not, not, not some truth, but all truth. It is the Lord who's leading and guiding us. We need to listen to the lead and guide, and it is him that is giving us the will and the energy. Man, that's a praise right now. You need, you, we need a praise break, come on, somebody. You need to praise him now. If you wanna shout, shout, shout on that. It is him who is giving you what you need to serve him. Hallelujah. What a mighty God we serve. He provides the will, the energy to enable you to do what pleases him. Angels bow before him, heaven and earth adore him. What a mighty God we serve, hallelujah. Ah, God, help me here. All I can do is shake my head. Cause he gives us the energy that we need. The will that we need. Now, let's get on to verse 14. This probably gonna take the rest of our time. Verse 14 says, man, what you, what you, why you say this to us, Lord? Right? He says, "Do all things without grumbling and disputing." We just got finished saying, we need to work out our own salvation. We just got finished saying that it is the Lord who is providing us the will and the energy to do what pleases him. We just got finished understanding what our task is. Our task is to bring about our own salvation. We just got finished doing that. So while we are on our task, we need to complete our task and do all things, not some things, but all things here, without grumbling and disputing. This is interesting. So Paul is giving a command to the church here. And that's what he's telling us to do. Do all things without grumbling and disputing. My, 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 my. What does grumbling then mean? Grumbling is murmuring. It is a complaint uttered in a low and indistinct tone. You know what it is. I don't know about them, they, they just, they get on my last nerve. I can't stand them. I can't stand this. I don't know, they think they saved, they ain't saved. You know, you know how we do. He's saying, "Do my will without grumbling and complaining." Now, let's be real. We all done failed at that. I'm the first to say that. I done failed at that, cause, man, I done complained under my breath a few times. Even this week, what they think they doing? Is this God that ain't, they, they, they... I know I done failed. I know I failed, and I seen this, I was like, Lord, have mercy. I'm telling you true, I'm telling you, I'm telling on myself. Tell the truth, shame the devil. I know, I, I know I've done this. Do all things without grumbling and complaining. There's a difference when you're expressing frustrations, saying, "God, you know, help me." But this right here, this something different. You know, let's get biblical precedents. Look at what the Old Testament says in Exodus 7 through 9. It says, "In the morning, this is concerning the manor. In the morning, you will see the glory of the Lord, for he hears what you grumble, your grumblings against the Lord. Why did you bring me out here, God? You brought me out here to die. We ain't got no meat. Well, I'm hungry, I'm tired, I'm tired of this. I'm tired of that, God, what you think this is?" Mm-hmm, that's what they was doing. He says, "For he hears your grumbling, grumblings against the Lord." And what, and, and, excuse me, and what are we that you grumbled against us? Moses said, "This will happen when the Lord gives you meat to eat in the evening and the bread to fill in the morning, for the Lord hears your grumblings, which you grumble against him. And what are we? Your grumblings and, your grumblings are not against us, but against the Lord." Then Moses said to Aaron, "So," say, he says, "Say to all the congregation of the sons of Israel, 'Come near before the Lord, for he has heard your grumblings.'" Moses tells us, Moses, what did Moses tell us? Moses told us that these grumblings slash murmurings, it's not against the people you're grumbling, you're, you're, you're grumbling about, right? But it's against God. They were mad because God had took them to a place that they did not like. They said, "Oh, we, we, we going to the promised land, the land of milk and honey." Of course, they had to go through some, they had to, they had to detox from Egypt. But they going through the desert. They going through the wilderness, and they upset cause they are used to a certain lifestyle, even though they were in bondage. They got accustomed to that lifestyle. Well, they like, they got accustomed to some chicken and some steak, some potatoes, you know what I'm saying? They, they got, they got accustomed, they were in bondage, but they got accustomed to a lifestyle. And God is saying, you know, "I, I want you to lead that lifestyle because you really think that's it, but it ain't it. But I'm gonna take you through something to prepare you for what you getting ready to receive, but we gotta shake that stuff up off of you." And they walking through the desert, kicking that dirt. Man, I don't know who God is. Who God think he is? How come we can't get no, how come we can't get no chicken like we had in Egypt? You know what I'm saying? We had chicken. We can't get no chicken. We can't get no grapes. I can't eat this same apple. Man, what's going on here? We ain't got no meat. And the scripture tells you, they was, they wanted some food. And what they were doing, they were grumbling against God. They were saying by their actions that they did not approve the decision that God had made on their life. Paul is saying, "We need to do all things without grumbling. We need to do all things without grumbling and complaining about the state that we are in because God has put us here." Okay, so we're going through a trial right now. That don't mean we gotta be talking under our breath all day about it cause we fighting against God, we talking about God. We saying, "God, I don't trust you to take me out of this process. He told me I was gonna go through this, and now that I'm here, I still don't wanna go through it." I'm like, "God, who you think you is? I'm, I'm, I'm Mr. Henderson. Who you think you is? You supposed to be, uh, I'm supposed to be the head and not the tail. I, I feel like I'm the tail, God, and, and, but you, you know how it is. Grumbling and complaining, murmuring." You talking, you, you, you losing trust in him. God, help us in our unbelief, help us in our trust issues. Cause that's what is identifying. We got trust issue, we grumbling and complaining. So that's why Paul is saying, "Man, stop talking underneath your breath. These folk in Philippi, they got churches that messed up. They got some churches that forgot, some churches that not forgot. I can't believe he said that he's not real." You know, they got, well, look at them, they, they got the wrong choir robes on. They supposed to be wearing pink and blue. You know you're supposed to be wearing red, that's the devil. You, I mean, you, you know how folk be. I'm just saying. Peter says, "Be hospitable to one another without complaining." Jude says, "These are grumblers." Oh, oh. Let's look at this list. These are grumblers. Finding, these are people that, these are grumblers. They finding fault, following after their own lusts. They speaking arrogantly, flattering the people for the sake of gaining an advantage. Paul is saying, "If you're gonna work out your salvation, don't you be flattering people to take advantage of them. Don't you be speaking after your own lusts. Don't you, don't you be just finding fault to find fault, to find fault." I mean, every time you look at somebody, "Oh, look at that. See, if I was in charge, it wouldn't happen that way. See, that's why they need to put me there because I'm gonna, I'll fix everything." No, you ain't. Grumblers, always finding fault. Always looking at the negative, never looking at the positive. Don't be a grumbler. Don't be somebody that speaks arrogantly. Ain't what I saying, what the Bible says. Disputing means verbal exchange that takes place when conflicting ideas are expressed, disputed, argumented, and argument arose. Or argument, you know, arises. Timothy says, "In every place of worship, I want men to pray with holy hands lifted up to God, free from anger and controversy." So Paul, what does Paul do? Paul is calling the church to not have negative speeches, to not have a negative speech. Let's look at some of these scriptures about negative speech, and this'll take us to the end of tonight's study. We'll look at negative speeches because this is a very important aspect of our walk with God. Because, let's be 100, we all have all had some negative talks and negative speeches, some grumbling and mumbling, and some mumbling and grumbling, and shaking our head, rolling our eyes, looking to the hill. You, you know how we done done. Don't act like I'm the only one that done it. We all done done it at one point in time in our lives. And so these negative, these negative facets here. See, this is a port, this is a section, really, we need to pray God so that we can get healing in our lives. That's, that's the reality. We need healing for our souls in this, in this, in this part. We really do. This is, this should be part of our prayer life, to heal us from this negative speech. And sometimes, when you start feeling, figuring out why you speaking all of this negative, it's because someone or somebody or some group hurt you. And so now, every time you see them groups, or every time you see people that remind you of them groups, you start grumbling and complaining, cause you hurt, you bruised, something happened. There was a change that happened. These folk in, in, the reason, these folk grumbling in, in Israel cause there, something changed. Their scenery changed. Something happened, so now they talking about it. Didn't something change in you? What happened to you? Life happened. What life, what life lessons have happened to you to make you have a negative speech towards a certain group of people? Cause they ain't just that individual, it's the spirit that those individuals carry. And if we don't, uh, fight that, that's part of working out our own salvation, it'll eat us alive. And then we'll be like these trees that look like they were really nourished, but then when they fall down, you see the roots all curled up. They couldn't even, they, roots ain't touched water since when? Or, you know how some trees do? They, they, they start sending their roots out to find, they get desperate because they're not getting nervous. They tap into sewer water, nasty water. They tap into an unclean, unclean stream of water, cause they can't find a natural, they not getting, they not getting their, their nourishment. Trying to tell you. Folk, when they get hurt and they start having this negative, sometimes they tapped into a wrong stream. It can be one leg in, but they still getting, part of their body still getting nourished. So, "The sinfulness of a fallen human nature can express itself in speech, provoking God's displeasure and causing enmity and division among people." So, evil speech comes from a corrupt heart. Didn't I just tell you? Who hurt, who hurt us? Who corrupted us? Now, we know, um, we know for a fact that sin, our heart is wicked because sin is in there, but there's some folk that, that come to Christ and then things happen and they, they go back. Matthew says, "Either make the tree good and its fruit good, or make the tree bad and the fruit bad, for the tree is known by their fruit." You brought a viper. How can you be evil speaking what is good? For the mouth speaks out of that which feels the heart. The good man brings out of, out of his good treasure what is good, and the evil man brings out of his evil treasure what is evil. Proverbs says, "To deliver you from the way of evil, from the man who speaks perverse things, from those who leave the path of upright, uprightness, to walk in the ways of darkness, who delights in doing evil and rejoices in perversity of evil, perversity of evil, whose paths are crooked, and who are devious in their ways." Look where Proverbs 24:1 and 2 says. It says, "Do not be envious of evil men, nor desire to be with them, for their minds devise violence, and their lips talks of trouble." Evilness comes from the heart. Last scripture about this, Matthew 15:10 says, "After Jesus called, called the crowd to him, he said to them, 'Hear and understand: it is not what enters the man that defiles the man, but what proceeds out of the mouth. This defiles the man.'" In the beginning statement, Matthew says, "You brought a viper. How can you be evil, speak what is good? For the mouth speaks out which feels the heart." Some of us have heart issues spiritually. Our hearts have been corrupted by a group, by people, maybe when we were raised. There's a lot of things that may have happened. But if you're going to work out your salvation, you gotta attack, why you, why are you grumbling? What, what caused you to continue to do that? And you need to get help, because that is part of working out your salvation. Bible says, "It's not what comes in. Our spirit is gonna be able to filter, but it's what comes out cause you're really speaking out of your heart. What comes out, that's why you can't put all your trust in your feelings. Your feelings will deceive you. I know, been there, done that. It will deceive you. It's gotta line up with the word of God. Sometimes we'll be in a heated moment, something happened, and we pop out of the mouth, and that, and what we feel. That's what our heart feel, that's what we feel. See what I'm saying? So, mm. You gotta, this is part of working out your salvation. It ain't just going to the altar and asking God to give you raise on your job. It's deeper than that. Maybe if you work out why you be talking negative about everybody you see, maybe the job will just come. I'm just saying. Evil speech is a feature of a corrupt society. We live in a society where evil speech is a feature. They highlight it. I mean, you know, I like to listen to sports, right? But there's some, some podcasts I can't listen to. It's like, every time I turn it on, they saying this cuss word, that. I'm like, man, I'm cool. Can you just talk about it without cussing them out? Like we not in the locker room. But now, it's a feature. Everybody wants to have a locker room experience, so they wanna have locker room language. I don't wanna have locker room language, I just wanna have language, I wanna have G language. You know what I'm saying? But it's, it's a feature. Micah says, "For the rich men of the city are full of violence. Her residents speaks lies, and their tongues is deceitful in their mouth. So also, I will make you sick, striking you down, desolating you because of your sins. Then, then I said, 'Woe is me, for I am ruined, because I am a man of unclean lips.'" And I have lived among people of unclean lips. That's what Isaiah says. "For my eyes have seen the king of the lord of hosts." Man, man, I'm, I'm telling you, Sister Ravina, look, uh, look, see, Isaiah had to acknowledge, man, I am a man, and you know, man or woman, but in this case, I'm a man, right? But to you, can be a woman, right? But I am a man of unclean lips. He said, "I live among people who are unclean lips." And my eyes, and, and, and he says, And my eyes, and, and, and he says, "And my eyes have seen the king of the Lord of hosts." He's acknowledging, see, see. When he saw the Lord high and lifted up in his train for the temple, he understood that. When I saw the glory, he's, he understood, "I'm a man of unclean lips. I'm a man that has featured a corrupt society of evil speech. I need to change." You need to take on what Isaiah says. You seen the power of God? He is, he is professing to God. Look at, I, 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 man, God, I'm, I'm a man of unclean lips. I'm not even worthy to be in your glory. But because you have allowed me to work, be in your glory, I'm gonna work out my salvation. And because I'm gonna work out my salvation, I'ma deal with my evil speeches. I'm gonna deal and not be of, not feature the speech of a corrupt society. I ain't gonna talk like they talk, I ain't gonna walk like they walk. I ain't cussing folk out like they cuss. They cussing, eh, I'm, Jesus be offense. Isaiah 59:1 and 4 says, "Behold, the Lord's hand is not so short that it cannot save, nor his hand, nor his ear so dull that he cannot hear. But your iniquities have made a separation between you and your God, and your sins have hidden his faith from you, so that he does not hear." He's saying your sins. "For your hands are defiled with blood and your fingers with iniquity; your lips have spoken falsehood; your tongue muttered wickedness." He says, "No one sues righteousness and no one pleads honestly. They trust in confusion and speak lies. They conceive mischief and bring forth iniquity." See what he's saying about the society here? No one pursues to be honest. They trust in confusion and they speak lies. They trust in the big lie. The lie of the world. They exchange the truth, they, 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 they flip things around. Things right side, things that are upside down, they say right side up. They reverse what we say. That's what Romans says. I'm gonna read Romans, and then we'll go to the next session. It says, "Being filled with all wicked, uh, all, with all unrighteousness, wickedness, greed, evil, full of envy, murder, strife, deceit, malice, they are gossips, slanderers, haters of God, insolent, arrogant, boastful, inventors of evil, disobedience to parents, without understanding, untrustworthy, uninvolving, unmerciful. And although they know the ordinance of God, that those who practice such things are worthy of death, they not only do the same, but they also give hearty approval to those who practice them." Don't that sound like what we doing? Man, why don't you just go ahead and, uh, go ahead and do yoga? Oh, you doing yoga now? Oh, oh, praise the Lord, now you, now you, now you seen. Why don't you turn away from God? Oh, now you turn your heart away from God, oh, now you see. See how they do? That's what they do. They now say that you woke. You ain't woke. You ain't alive. They give approval to those who practice wickedness. Cause the society is evil. Paul says, "You need to work out your salvation with fear and trembling. You need to worship him in awe." That means you don't want the world's approval of doing evil. It's like, okay, let me put it like this. It's like somebody who's doing evil in the church would just say, person's a minister. And, and before they was, before they was, before they was, uh, you know, they was a nobody, but soon as they join these secret societies and all this other kinda stuff, now all of a sudden, they on every magazine, they keep doing more wicked and wicked. But now all of a sudden, the doors open, God is opening doors. No, the world is opening doors. Do you know people sell their soul so that they can get rich in fame? And because they sell their soul, so they're part of these secret groups now, now the world approves them. Now, now, they feel like they have arrived. But they doing wicked. They're doing the, what the society says. Man, I just, Timothy says. Look like, look like my, uh, clicker got stuck here. Oh, well. Timothy says, that's okay, we'll pick this back up. But Timothy says, in 2 Timothy 3:1 and 5. It says. It says in 2 Timothy 3:1 and 5, "But realize this, that in the last days difficult times will come, for men will be lovers of themselves, lovers of money, boastful, arrogant, revilers, disobedient to parents, ungrateful, unholy, unloving, in, um, irrecoverable, irreconc, irreconcilable, that means they won't, they won't reconcile anything, malice, malicious gossip, without self-control, brutal, haters of good, treacherous, reckless, conceited, lovers of pleasure rather than lovers of God, holding to a form of godliness, although they have denied his power." And Timothy says, "Avoid such man." This is people who, who key into the features of society. And we, we're gonna stop there, and we'll pick up at evil speeches provoke God's displeasure. Amen. We'll pick that up, um, on next Bible study or on Sunday, however the Lord leads. But this is, this is key. The key is, is that Paul says that we need to work out our own salvation. What does that mean? We've, we've read it in numerous places. And he says that you need to now, it's up to you to work out. Let me, let me pull up what it said again in that other translation that said it so wonderfully. It says, in the, uh, Bible for everyone, it says, "So my dear people, you always did what I said, so now please, so please now, carry on in the same way, not just as though I was there with you, but much more because I'm not." And this is our section. "Your task now is to work at bringing about your own salvation. And naturally, you will be taking this with utter seriousness." 13 says, "After all, God himself is the one who, who is at work among you, who provides both the will and energy to enable you to do what pleases him. Your task, again, is to work at bringing about your own salvation. And naturally, you'll take this with utter seriousness, seriousness need. You'll be serious about this." This is what he is saying. Every knee is gonna bow, every tongue is gonna confess. Whether you saved or not, it's coming. The only difference is, those that are saved, and they do this confession that everybody's going to confess, they're gonna be with him in a book of life. Paul says that this is a future event that is coming in Philippians. In Romans, he's telling us that we can acknowledge. In Acts, he tells us that we need to repent for the remission of our sins, right? Be baptized, right? And we'll be filled with the Holy Ghost, right? There's a repentance, there's a, there's a, that, that's a confession right there. You're repenting for your sins, you're acknowledging your wrong, you're being born again. This confession, this, that baptism, right? This is an open acknowledgement, free declaration that Jesus is my Lord. He says that you need to work out your salvation and do this without grumbling and disputing. We'll get to the reason why next week. But as we've seen here, we all got work to do, and a part of working out our salvation is dealing with the tough things. You can't overlook, you can't just turn a blind eye. I've tried it, it don't work. You can't turn a blind eye and think that things are just gonna go away, or things are just magically gonna get better, and you don't never address why you feel the way that you feel. And we, and I know, you don't want to, cause it hurts. You don't wanna go through the emotional pain that you're gonna go through. You don't wanna go through your crying, you don't wanna go through yelling, you don't wanna go through screaming, you don't wanna go through not sleeping, you don't wanna go through all of that. You just wanna turn your nose and just think it's gonna get better. But they, remember what David said. David said, "When I did that in Psalms 32, when I did that in verse 3, 4, and 5, when I did that, it felt like the, it felt like all the energy was just coming up out of me. I was the walking dead." That's what it felt like, until I opened my mouth and confessed. You don't wanna live like that. I know you don't. I know you don't. Working out your salvation is partly dealing with certain issues. Because at the end of the day, we wanna be, we want God to say, "Well done, thy good and thy faithful servant." Remember, Paul even said he had a thorn. We don't know what that is, but he had something that kept triggering him. We, Paul had, Paul had to deal with some issues. We know he said his grace is sufficient, but he said, "There was a thorn, and I wanna do good. Evil is always present." So I'm telling you right now, working out your salvation is more, it's more than what you show people that when you in church, well, look at me. Man, a lot of that is gonna be you and God. You and God in the, in the, in the bathroom, in the car, wherever you have your secret places with him, that's when y'all gonna work that out, and that's where you really gonna see him for who he is. And I'm telling you, now is the right time. Don't take God for granted. Don't put off tomorrow what you can do right now. I'm telling you this right now. I know, I know, I know, I know. We know tomorrow's not, ah, God, we know tomorrow's not promised. Hallelujah. I, don't, don't, man, if you feel something in your chest now, when we get off this live, man, go talk to him. Go talk to God. Write it out. Write it out in the journal, voice talk it, whatever. Get it out, talk to the Lord, and start dealing with this to work out. Cause you need to work on you too. Hallelujah. Don't let this tremble inside of you. Let's pray. Father, we just thank you for your word. Hallelujah. We thank you for your presence right now in this place. God, our prayer right now is that our soul still be saved. That our soul still says, "Yes, Lord." That our mind and our bodies still say yes. Even in a society where they applaud wickedness, we say with our heart and our soul and our mind and every essence and fiber in our body, our soul still says yes. God, I ask you to touch every person here, hmm, every person online, every person, God, that is gonna view this now, or viewing it now, or in the future, that they make the proper decisions and choices, and ultimately, they choose you to say that, "My soul says yes to you, God. My soul says yes to your will." And that I'm going, then they're gonna do whatever it takes to work out their salvation, so that when it's all said and done, you will say, "Well done, thy good and thy faithful servant." Give them the strength, give them the tenacity, give them the willpower, God, to go through this process, cause they know that on the other side, hallelujah, Crater is one day in your court than a thousand elsewhere. They know that there's nothing compared to the glory that shall be revealed. Father, we give you a name, glory, honor, and praise, in Jesus' name. Amen. We wanna thank you tonight, for everybody that has tuned in. Amen, hallelujah. And we hope to see you here at 10 o'clock, amen, where we'll get started for our Sunday service, amen. As you see on the screen, the Lord is leading you to donate, you can text, you can go to our website, www.praisebynatureministries.com, and just press the give button, amen, and it'll direct you there. Until then, amen, we will see you on Sunday. Be blessed in Jesus' name. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Be blessed.